I'm following this regular session Wednesday, January 19th to order. Can you lead the roll call?
Certainly. Council President Sheldon Meyer.
Present.
Councilor Duke Wells.
Here.
Councilor Tom Mellon.
Here.
Councilor Susan Snow.
Here.
And Councilor Rory Hammond.
Here.
And Mayor Forsythe and Councilor Orr are both absent and excused.
For the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
As seen unanimously, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify the same. We're now on announcements.
I have three announcements this evening. The city county insurance services statement came in today. And it's really nice to say that we have a credit of almost $300. Yay! The Oregon Community Foundation is announcing its second round of relief funding for artists. Artist resilience program to provide $1.5 million for Oregon artists. More information can be obtained by going to the website OregonArtsCommission.org. Or call me and I'll give you the information. Next, we have a letter that was received from Mr. Stanley. It said, "To the Dune City Council and those in attendance. My name is Ron Stanley and I have served Dune City in the past on the Budget Committee. I would also like to attend current meetings but have not because of my age is of those that are the most vulnerable to complications from COVID. While I truly dislike mandates, especially from any level of government, other considerations may be in play as well. Even with staff doing their best to arrange for distancing, I still consider the space at Dune City Hall to be too confined to allow some to show their opposition to mandates by not taking every precaution to protect their own constituents from..." Conti... I don't know how to pronounce that.
Contagion.
So, "I would consider local government officials wearing masks and taking every precaution in this Omicron environment to simply be a common courtesy more than a caving to authority. With respect and hope for a better future, Ron Stanley."
Thank you, Jamie.
I have also received a letter from Jeanne Jackson that I would like to read into the record, but I don't know if you want me to do it now or wait until citizen input on things not on the agenda.
Whichever.
Okay. I'll go ahead and do it now. Dear Dune City Councilors, I am a third-generation West Laker whose paternal grandparents first arrived here in 1920. Like our parents, my siblings and I were raised in Westlake, as were most of our children and grandchildren. It was our uncle, the late Bob Jackson, who wrote the first book on Westlake and once served as our mayor. It was also Uncle Bob who first invented some of the early Dune City... invited some of the early Dune City Council members to this building so they could hold their meetings in a warmer and more hospitable environment than the damp and moldy trailer they were using by the fire station on Clear Lake Road. Throughout the intervening years, several changes have occurred that had not been welcomed by our family or many of the residents of Westlake, though one of the worst of which was the attempted takeover in 1988 of our decades-old Westlake post office, resulting in the third attempt to succeed from... to succeed from Dune City. This time, even Uncle Bob joined in. Angered by our protest, the councilors of the day chose to remove the longstanding Westlake sign that had for decades graced our junction and replaced it with a large, commercial-looking one of their own, as if we West Lakers no longer existed or mattered. Following these actions, a lot of us ceased to attend Dune City meetings and Uncle Bob and many other old-time residents chose to move out of town. Now, Dune City wants to turn the recently acquired residential property across the street into a commercial one, which could greatly affect the peace and privacy of those of us who have long lived in the west of... west of City Hall on Pacific Avenue. Dune City purchased the building that was once used as Westlake's community center and sportsman club for a mere $2,000, basically the cost of back taxes, thanks to the cooperation and generosity of those involved. The city is now seeking to rezone the quiet residential area to the west of City Hall to a commercial one so as to use it for emergency and other storage facilities. This could create a problem for many of our family members and neighbors who settled in this beautiful area for its peace and privacy long before you. Using this property that abuts our backyards on Henlock Street and those of our neighbors on Pacific Avenue for additional city storage and parking is one thing, but the possible coming and going of emergency vehicles on groups of people is quite another. Would any of you enjoy living next to a fire station or ambulance services? A lot of us has sleep issues as well, so please take your fellow residents and neighbors into consideration before you act. Noise factors could also affect our individual property values should any of us in the close vicinity of City Hall choose to sell, rent, or seek a loan. Our family and I are also concerned about possible passage of ordinance number 259 and code 155.1.4 without further changes to them and more input from the many residents of Dune City. Please keep us and our citizenry abreast of any further meetings you or the planning committee decide to have on these important subjects. Thank you for your time and consideration in these matters. We appreciate your efforts and are counting on you to be more thoughtful than some of those who have served in the past. Sincerely, Jeanne Jackson and family.
So, that sounds like it is an agenda item.
Actually, one of them is, and I had not gotten that far down the letter to see that it was. But I'm glad she said that.
Yeah, so is it part of the public hearing that we're gonna have for rezoning?
Um, I don't... is that... is that going to be...
Is that one of the things on...
Yes.
What I... what I... That we have that read into the public hearing?
Just that paragraph?
Yeah.
Good idea.
I move for just a second.
Did someone say?
No second.
Is there motion?
Yeah, and I move that we put that portion of the paragraph in the public hearing of the rezoning.
I'll say it then.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The last announcement I'm not pleased to have to share with you. Johan Mayland, who was our last-appointed mayor from 1973 to 1975, has passed away. And I thought it was worth you all knowing that. Citizen input on items not discussed in public hearing?
He's led with red, and there's... there's no other need.
Jeanne Jackson?
It'd be me. Hello. Thank you for reading my letter.
Oh, you're welcome.
Did you...
Yeah, I basically... I mean, basically, Ms. Mills read what I wanted, you know, to say, so I won't take up any more of your time unless other people want to speak. I would like to just state one other thing because this is the first time I have been to a council meeting in many years. I have gone to some of the planning board commissions lately, or committee meetings. And so, I simply want to say, really appreciate what you all do. And I know we may have a few different views, but I do... this one is safe for the record, like someone said earlier in a letter, that I would really appreciate the use of masks, especially when we have so much COVID in this area right now. I saw today on the news, last night on the evening news, they said that there's 347,000 new cases in Oregon this week alone. So I just... I thank all of you who are wearing a mask. I'm concerned about those who don't, but we appreciate your good works. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no presentations, so we're moving right into hold business and Silco's game operations.
I can report that the mayor and I spoke with the legal counsel recommended by our water right attorney and explained the situation, and we now await a report from him. At that time, I will inquire of his... as to his availability for an executive session so that you can all come in and ask him questions to talk about the issue. And that's all I have, unless somebody asks questions. Let's not leave this off.
Our second hold business is Resolution Series 2022, number one. Current number one, 192022, the Incurrions About the Dune City Building Program Operating Plan is mandated by SB 866 in Oregon's history. Is this a woman, Jamie, that you're concerned that if we don't pass it, the state takes over?
Yes. And there should be a script there and... for you. For our resolution. Series 2022, number one, it was a short one.
That's a staff report. Which one is that?
Number...
It's that one right there you have in your hand.
Is it number one or number two?
Number one.
Number one?
Yeah.
Okay. The resolution adopting the City of Dune City Building Inspection Program Operating Plan dated January 19th, 2022, mandated by SB 866, passed by the 2021 legislative session and meeting the requirements of OAR 918-020, adopted by the Oregon Department of Consumer and Business Services relating to the city's building inspection program and contract services associated therewith, and authorizing the city administrator to execute said operating plan. And we have a staff report on this issue, please.
Yes. Background. As a result of an opinion made by the administrator of the Building Codes Division of the Oregon Department of Consumer and Business Services, a concern was raised that cities who utilize third-party contractors to provide the building official and building inspection services are in violation of the Constitution of the State of Oregon. This position was later upheld by the Oregon Attorney General's Office. An outcry came from the cities in the state of Oregon, including Dune City, claiming hardship associated with cities having to adjust their budgets to now include an additional $130,000 to $160,000 to hire a qualified building official and/or building inspector on staff. Thanks to the efforts of Representative McEwen and Senators Roblin and Johnson, the legislature became involved and negotiations continued, but little progress was made. With neither McEwen or Roblin seeking reelection, the last legislative session passed Senate Bill 866, which was signed into law by the governor. The enrolled bill contains language that was considered to be a negotiated settlement. The city's lobbyists informed staff that this compromise was about the best we were going to get, so we were stuck with it. Discussion. By way of letter dated November 22nd, 2021, the city was informed of the city's obligations associated with the bill's passage, including opting to continue using third-party contractors, which must take place by January 1st, 2022. That letter was approved by the city council at the December 15th, 2021 special session and sent to the Building Codes Division on December 16th, 2021. The letter also set forth the provisions and obligations the city must meet before January 31st, 2022. These obligations include: Completion of Form 2510, including a list of current staff, contract providers, and their applicable certifications. An updated copy of the municipality's operating plan is described in OAR 918-020-090. A narrative describing any changes to the operating plan, and a copy of the current... city's current fee schedule. The city administrator used the remainder of the month of December and the first two weeks of January to complete the revised Dune City Building Inspection Program Operating Plan, which, if approved tonight, would be dated January 19th, 2022. The requisite resolution for adoption of the plan. I completed the forms and gathering the information requested and then drafted ordinance number 261, amending Dune City's code to comply with the requirements and procedures set out in the plan. All of these items are before you this evening. You will note in the operating plan that the language that was added or changed is highlighted in yellow. For the benefit of those present and listening and who do not have a copy to refer to, the changes that were mandated include: One, describing how Dune City handles the money it collects for issuance of its structural, mechanical, building, and electrical permits. Two, description of other funds collected for permit issuance and paid to other parties, such as the school construction tax. Three, the history of the city's permits fees and the last time they were updated by Resolution Series 2020, number five, adopted August 26th of 2020, the first time fees had been raised since 2007. Four, a description of how the International Codes Council valuation table is used and updated, as well as where someone could obtain a copy. Five, complete revision of the description of the duties of the contract building official. Six, a new section regarding the newly mandated qualified employee position and the qualification and trainings the employees must successfully complete to be able to perform the duties of qualified employees. Seven, revise the appeals section to include a separate action on appeals of a decision of the contract building official. Eight, revises the membership of the local appeals board to include the city council, the Lane County building official, and an individual engaged in building design or construction who is not or cannot be affiliated with the agreed party of the appeal. Nine, a description of the permit process for applications that require plan review. Ten, a new section addressing the new requirement to having the building fund audited every two years at the city's expense and to make the results of the audit available on the city's website. And eleven, paragraphs describing the types of permits that are issued by the city, the jurisdictional boundaries of the city, the hours of operation, and where all notices are to be sent. Fiscal impact. The audit required can be included in the audit most cities already require... are required to do if their annual budget exceeds $500,000. Usually, Dune City's budget does not exceed $500,000, so we are not required to do a full-blown audit, but must have a financial review done. This new mandate may cost the city a substantial sum of money in the future. Note: The city has its own policy that regardless of budget size, an audit must be done at least every five years. An exception occurred last year as the city's budget did exceed $500,000 because of the $305,000 grant the city received for the purchase of the land for Rebecca's Trail. This year and next year, the American Rescue Act dollars will likely also put us over the $500,000... $500,000 threshold if we get additional grant funds for road repairs. Recommendations and suggested motion. Staff recommends passage of Resolution Series 2022, number one, to meet the mandates implemented by Senate Bill 866 and Oregon administrators. And I can insert a question.
Okay, first, I have a question here. I'm suing... this is... I'm looking at our book, Underhold Business Exhibit 8117, there's a packet there.
Right.
And in there, it talks about Board... Appeals Board. Now, how are those Appeals Board members... who are they and how are they appointed? Because I read that it was... it sounded like there was somebody outside the city.
Yes, it does include others outside the city.
And how are they picked?
Up until this became law, you guys, the city council, served as the appeals board. You remember what...
Right.
Things before, before. And whenever somebody violates code. But now, it is... they're taking over control of what the local appeals board will be for decisions being made by the contract building official that are based on his discretionary... his or her discretionary opinion. And there's only certain circumstances that that would arise.
Well, it... it... but it sounds... there are... there are... it sounds like there are not elected officials that are Appeals Board. Is that true or not?
Yes, that is true. There will be... there would be two. One, who is the guy that... who is the Lane County building official. No. No, the Lane County... yeah, I guess that's what it says. Is that what it says? Lane County building official? That's why I did that list.
Right. I just put a note here, and so I didn't look at it.
Says Wade County building official.
So we will no longer be reviewing for overriding or have our say about...
You would sit as members on that board, but you would not be the only ones on that board.
So would we have equal voting rights?
You would have equal voting rights. Well, everybody would have a vote.
Right. Any other councilors have any questions of staff? The wetlands and the FEMA additions there, how much longer will that take in terms of issuing permits and codes?
We have been carrying that on for a long time. If there is a need for the FEMA permit, that could be months, if not years.
Because I see that it's all yellow and it's new. So, so if somebody is in a wetlands or they're building in a wetland...
If they're trying to build in a wetland, it will be... well, wetlands aren't necessarily in the FEMA flood zone.
Right.
Most of them are, but not all of them are. So, there's two different things that we're talking about. But if you're talking about being in the FEMA flood zone, then a person would have to get the ordinary high watermark actually determined because it's never been determined for... and you have to get it determined for your location because it's never been determined really for the lake officially.
So, I have a small portion of my property that's in the FEMA, as you know, and to get... it's almost impossible.
Yes.
If I was gonna build, it's almost impossible to get that done. So basically, it would stop people building on...
Yes. Or it would... it would prevent people from being as interested in building.
What about existing buildings? If somebody's gonna do a remodel or something, there's a building code?
You still have to get the FEMA permit.
And if we... if we do not pass this, what happens?
Well, if you don't do it, do it, then you don't get to build whatever it is you want to do.
No, I mean, if the council does not approve this...
Oh, if the council doesn't approve this, the state will take over operation of our building plan and everybody will have to get their permits from the state or perhaps the county.
And they still have the same building requirements? I mean, if there's the requirements about flood zones or...
Well, then the appeals process would be in Salem.
The only thing I'd like to add to that is, is this, you know, there was a paragraph in there stating that the city, our city and other cities got together.
Yes, we did.
And with our representatives helping us out. It really was a big deal. When they came and we got the letter from the state, there were no ifs, ands, or buts. We were getting rid of our contract building inspectors and we were going to buy, pay for, pay.
Somebody on staff.
Well, it sounds like... it sounds like we've lost quite a bit of local control, but it sounds like...
To me, this sounds like it's a negotiation, but to me, it's a win. There are 11 mandated things that we have to do that are, you know, going... Do who jump in, but I take this as a win for Dune City and all the other old cities.
I would point out that the section that you're talking about, I did that because I wanted them to know what the city does and that... because they gave us 30 days.
Right.
30 days to do all... they don't realize how much oversight the city exercises over our building official and our inspector, and I wanted them to learn that lesson, that we do.
I don't... I just wanna make it clear what we're voting on.
Yeah.
Because I did read it.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Series 2021, number one.
So moved.
Second.
2022.
Any further discussion?
For the record, the correction would be to 2022.
Okay.
Thank you.
So 2021.
Yes.
Quarter of a new year.
Does it say 2021 on there?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. It doesn't?
Oh, it's down here.
It depends on what you're reading.
Down here.
Yeah. I'll tell you, by the time I got to this point, I was glad it was all over.
All those in favor, signify the same. Any opposed? It's passed. Your unanimous agreement.
Thank you. I'll get that in the mail.
Uh, the next hold business is Statement of Work for Dune City from Rory Hammond for Computer and Security System Updates.
The statement of work is included in your packets tonight. Rory has already started on a number of things. I learned a lesson from this. I'm supposed to follow them around the vacuum thing. It was messy. I don't know if you guys can see it or not. Let's see these wires?
Yeah.
These are the new ones. The old ones are still around, so I want them to take the old ones out. We really don't need all of them.
So I... I... my statement of work is that I would provide an infrastructure upgrade plan. I didn't say I was gonna do the project, but I've been doing the project too.
Yes.
So I did provide a complete cost plan. And as I... and I did provide documents that shows the current topology, and I do have documents that show the ending topology. The only thing that I was unable to do in the statement of work that I officially said I'd do, and I'm already doing more, was that we didn't get the Spectrum security suite on because of Spectrum getting that thing. So is that... So I provided this and I spent probably about 22 hours worth of total time since we last met.
Well, thank you very much for what you've done, and if you don't get to make a little bit of a mess, where's the pun?
Well, I... it's really the electricians that made the mess.
Yes, it really was. It was the electrician. And I will... and he did in all... he did bring us, you know, some really good coffee cake.
I didn't know it was right. So I was at the Sugar Shack in Reed'sport, and I buy bread there occasionally, and they had this Marion Berry coffee cake. And it was $10, and all I wanted was a piece. So I bought it. I had a $10 piece and left the rest for everybody else.
And it was delicious.
Well, thank you for that, too.
Yes, thank you.
All right, new business, Appointment of Committee Chairpersons.
Okay, that is generally the mayor's job.
Yeah.
But you might want to inquire of Councilor Snow, and that'd be the only one. If she wants to continue, she may want to give it up.
Do you want to continue?
Yeah, I'm gonna continue. If we...
If we can get a committee together. I wrote to everyone on the committee to see if they wanted to continue. I've got two yays, one no, and seven no answers.
What committee is this, the water?
The water committee.
Okay.
So with three people, there's very little we can do.
All right. Well, thank you for.
Well, I could put that on the next agenda for the mayor to do his appointments of the committee chair, of which councillors are going to do what.
And is that a big deal to a committee member?
No, that you guys can do without the mayor.
So Kay is going to be moved for our mayor to take care of?
Right.
Okay. Then appointment of committee members. We have water committee, water quality committee, ad member Aaron Bowen and Alan Snow. I move that we appoint the members listed. All of them that are listed, yes.
Um, there is one more applicant under budget committee.
Which is Gail Nichols. And then all of that plus.
And Gail is here tonight, if you guys want to, just wait.
Okay. One second, Dan. Any further discussion? All votes in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Uh, number C, resolution series 2022 number two. I'm going to present one 19 dash 22 to the committee directing the expenditure of the American Rescue Fund Act dollars to assist local community water systems to improve water service to their customers. And.
I'm looking, looking, seeing. Okay, we may have some people who's here this evening that would like to say something on this issue.
Do you want to have a script for that?
No, I don't, well, yes, maybe.
Yes, you would have a script for it. I, I have one right here if you need it, but it's not color coded. I don't know what torrent it is. He should have it. It's basically the same script as the other one, except for here.
Resolution series 2022 number two, resolution authorizing city administrator of Dune City to use a portion but no more than. What's the blank?
That's up to you guys this evening.
Of the American Rescue Act funds to assist small water systems in Dune City in upgrading and modernizing their systems for the benefit of the residents who rely on those water systems and other matters related there too. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Within the Dune City limits, there are community water systems that provide drinking water to residents in a specific area, usually the subdivision or a certain neighborhood. These community systems include Alderwood, Alderwood Development, Fern Acres Community Water System, South Coast Water Company, Summit Water District, Cottage Water Co-op, and Wohink View Water System. Staff was contacted by residents of the Alderwood Water Development System to see if the city would be willing to take over operation of their system, or at least to help them get their system up to date as it was fraught with leaks, poor pressure, and frequent loss of their pumps. The mandate to install fish screens had put them over the edge at the time when the pump had once again given out. Staff was also contacted by citizens of the Fern Acres Community Water System, inquiring if there was any assistance to help them get their old failing system up to capacity to adequately serve its customers in that neighborhood. Wohink View Water System last year was notified by the state water master that some of their residents did not hold a permit to use Wohink water and as a consequence, they were required to sign up under the Dune City Water Right. This caused difficulties between neighbors and extended discussions on how the system could operate when a portion of the residents have a state certificate and a portion are under the Dune City Water Right. I would point out that those issues appear to have been resolved and for the most part. We still have some other things going on, but. You have been hearing about the problems with South Coast Water Company for a couple of years now. They are the water company closest to the people in the Manzanita and Jensen Lane areas who could most efficiently expand their service to include those individuals who are currently without water due to saltwater infiltration of wells and wells going dry. Cottage Water Co-op and Wohink View Water System are happily existing on wells that are functioning to everyone's satisfaction at this time. Water in the southernmost section of Dune City across the West Lake Bridge comes from the Summit Water Company. Residents aren't thrilled with the services they are getting either. And when there is, and then there is West Lake itself. Saltwater has and continues to infiltrate into their wells. Appliances and fixtures are corroding away. High levels of salt are showing up in the water tests all over Silkus Lake. It is only a matter of time before all residents who have wells or draw water from Silkus Lake will have a serious problem on their hands. Discussion. The American Rescue Act funds distributed to the city are earmarked to be used in certain ways. Recently, the U.S. Treasury Department issued rules and regulations on how and why that money can be spent. Those rules and regulations put emphasis on helping government employees to be adequately provided tools to work from home or to easily hold virtual meetings. The process to improve the city's electronic capabilities is in progress and will continue until completed. Another of the area, another area of emphasis, however, is drinking water and wastewater systems. Water and sewer are acceptable uses of the funds. Roadways have now been de-emphasized, except where they might serve to improve business districts. Fiscal impact. The city will ultimately receive over $317,000 from the federal government over the next two years and has a total of five years to spend it. Reports are due when requested. We have until 2025 to spend the money. The money can be used to make loans on whatever terms the city sets. We can use the money to do outright grants, or grants with terms such as requiring an operating and financial plan from each water company. We help to ensure that doesn't happen in the future or as an alternative, perhaps mandate that the system be turned over to the city for operation in the future. Any of these actions may go a long way to meet the state's requirements to the city moving forward with a municipal water system and address the immediate health and safety issue a number of residents are having without adequate drinking water. Recommendations, suggested motion. Staff recommends passes of resolution 2022 number two to assist community water systems in improving their water delivery systems with the condition that either the system adopt a reasonable plan or ensuring all expenses and repairs can be met and continued maintenance and operation of the system into the future, or in the alternative that the system be conveyed to the city for continued operation and maintenance as part of the city's municipal water system. Staff further recommends that the city actively and aggressively pursue installation of a drinking water system for the West Lake area. Respectfully submitted, this is I can't hear you, Jan.
Council, do you have any questions?
I would, we were doing the electronics and our update on all the things that we need here at City Hall. I think that's very important. I'm one of the customers at Fern Acres, so I have a dog in a fight on this. And I know that all the other ones, I have family that knows some on the other systems, I know they're all in need of some type of repair. I think it's important for City Hall to get up to date and then I think, from what I'm seeing, I'm not worried about any emphasis on roads right now, but I think then my suggestion would be to put the rest of that money available to each one of the city systems that we have in Dune City. You know, to a point, not one put in, you know, if there's five, six systems and they can take up to their percentage of whatever money's left when Dune City gets done upgrading the facilities here. Yes.
Any other questions of staff? How many people do we have in the Alderwood Water Development System, you know?
Alderwood, probably 12 to 15. It might be as many as 20. And Fern Acres is about the same.
And how many in the Wohink Water System?
The Wohink.
Water System last year notified, said the permit, we have to bring some.
Oh, the Wohink View, there were, gosh, you know, you think I'd remember that off the top of my head. If Melissa were here, she could tell you right off the bat. I believe there were five additional people, in addition to the people who already were under the state permit that became, that signed up with Dune City Water Right.
And then Cottage and Wohink Water, how many people are part of that?
Cottage is one, two, three, four. Maybe five, I think there's five lots over there.
And then the Wesley, I did a quick count.
Hundred and five. Serves a hundred and five, would serve 105 homes.
In Wesley?
In Wesley.
Big deal.
Homes and businesses.
Do you know how many wells that are operating or in?
As far as I can tell, everybody over there has a well.
I counted, just by looking at the well log, I counted at least 97 wells, but I'm sure there's more of that.
That probably sounds about right. That, that actually sounds about right, because some do take out the river.
So the reason why I mention this, because there's 87, I think, in the south, 87 or 97 in the South Coast Water District, is that true?
Yeah, I think it is, yeah.
So if you add all those numbers up, plus the wells, that's about 250 or 300. Well, I'm thinking. And the problem with, with, I think with the South Coast Water District is everybody's complaining about the cost. And I know the cost goes down per user as the numbers go up. And that was all, that's the only thing I, my remark there. So it's too bad that we, we don't actually try to consolidate these systems or make them so that we have similar, so like, some people have it really cheap, other people don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't know. It seems like the water system, they'd be better served as a, you know, one community instead of a bunch of small ones.
I tend to agree with that. I don't see how we could ever monitor individual wells, you know, passing out money to all these folks to fix salt in their wells. There could be a million reasons why or how to fix that. We're not equipped here to be able to do that and we don't have staff, I don't think, to know exactly how to do that. It is my, my thought or feeling that one of the reasons, one of the barriers to people adding to the system is that the line extension charges would be a lot. And I, I wonder if people would be more willing to connect up the extensions or just the feet from the property that is close to it. And, and so, and I can't remember, we did allocate a portion of the money, was it December? Was that like, did it come out, it'd be about $300,000 or $250,000?
Well, what you did was you said 10,000 for the computer upgrade, or 20,000 for the computer upgrade. What, what else was there? Yeah, but all the rest of it went to roads. And so there was something else and then all the rest of it went to roads.
And so what you're proposing is that we instead of doing roads, we do that for the water system because of the?
Because of the urgency.
Okay.
For the benefit of the residents.
Is this going to be a public hearing?
Shelby? Um, I just wanted to say, um, I think it's important that, you know, we help get some fresh water. My only concern in reading the staff report was turning things over to the city where we don't have staff or people or any knowledge in order to do something like that, that, so I'm, I'm all for helping people do what they need to do, I'm not for turning it over to the city.
Comment, how would we help the people then? Do you have an idea how we could help them there? How would we do that if we don't have staff? And I agree with you, by the way.
Well, she, you know, she talked about helping out the different water development systems that are already in place.
Right. But what, how would we do that?
I, I agree with Duke's.
Suggestion is basically split up, tell me a specific amount of money and split it up between them. Have them make application. I think they should, and by application just call.
They need to tell us what the three is.
Email, let me know, you know.
They need to be doing something to help the residents with it, but I think they can help the residents with it. Turning it over to us, we have nobody to run it or anything, just doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, we just have engineers though. That would tell us what to do.
Any other questions?
I don't know if there's anybody in the audience that would like to make comment.
I think we do.
I actually have a question and it's for councillor Wells. You were talking about the various different water stations that we have around Dune City. Does that include access for the public? Like when we had this terrible salt problem recently here in Oregon, can, in Wesley, can you go to these stations and get, just fill up a few gallons of fresh water or something? Do we have access here in Wesley to get fresh water when we need it?
I can only speak for the one that I'm on, you know, and the person that's been working on it for over 20 years and sitting behind you and.
Okay.
He, he, it's amazing, he has to work all the time. He has a, has a life, has his own business and he spends hours and hours and hours every month working on that thing. And it's old. I, I think I've lived on that system the longest. I think that system was put in, Terry would know, I think that system was put in 66 or 67, so like everything is, is showing its age. And.
Yeah, it was just a question, like once I had to, I was desperate for water, my car wasn't working, I went down to Taiyi and I got some water there and I was given permission to do that, but that really belongs to the park, not necessarily to us, right? So where do you go if you just need some water and you need it now and you can't get to town?
People used to go to the springs and get excellent water out in the state.
Yes, I know.
And shut it down.
Yeah.
They did to shut it down, they destroyed it.
Exactly, that's where we all got our.
Yeah, I know, I got it there. It was wonderful water.
It was the best.
And they destroyed it, so.
Yeah.
It's their water, they didn't want people having water for.
Did private, did a private party buy it? Is that what happened?
No, the state did that.
Ah, wow. Are you talking about the well that's down Highway 1?
The spring, the spring.
The spring that was up here?
Yeah, Air Hard.
Yeah. Yeah, my.
By county, by county line.
Both of the springs here.
Yeah.
Number County Line.
And the one on 101. Okay. No, I was just asking, because you brought up the different water stations and I thought, does that mean there's a place we can go get water when we need it without having to go to Sound of Time?
Different water systems.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Can I?
Terry Austin, I run the Fern Acres Water District, basically fixed it. Right now, I've put a brand new pump in the lake after the other one burned out over 20 years or, I think it lasted 20 years. It's $20, $200 out of our pocket and we got reimbursed. And it's real hard for us because we've only got 10 people on it, a few that don't use it, have rights to it. I was warned 30 years ago, when I took this over, a neighbor had a stroke, a neighbor of Duke and I had a stroke. I was a young guy, he said, you're the only young guy in the neighborhood, everybody else is. So I've been doing it for 30 years. I've come to chase 20 leaks. Our tank was predates this city and it's been shot last year, totally rusted out, about to collapse. The more, originally it was all cabins, vacation, you know, part-time use. Now it's bigger houses, hot tubs, people putting their own pumps, their own storage. I'm going crazy.
Yeah.
I'm literally going, and all the trees on top of the line. And the, and the, it used to be a one lane road, now everybody drives on the shoulder and wrecks the, wrecks the shoulders. The, the street's falling apart. The new building down the street this year destroyed on the road in front of our house. It's destroyed because of the big trucks coming by. One of the lawyers a long time ago took an excavator, unloaded it down there and drove it down the road. it down the road and cracked everything. A lot of the water problems on our system are going to be under the road. So the road system would, the road money would be, I don't know how you would separate that, but you're gonna have to dig up the asphalt to find the leak.
So where citizens could once walk to the springs and get water when they needed it, when their own wasn't working in their home, we can't do that anymore because there's no spring that's available to do that.
They cut down the springs 10 years, yeah, 10 years ago. Yeah, and all the trees now are, that were saplings then, they're all huge, with, I've cut roots off the lines that are bigger than trees. I spent a lot of holidays on my ear with my hand out there in the water, you know, and it's just, I'm 60 on my second pair of hips, I can't, I can't do this anymore. There's nobody to take it over.
So, so again, I'm gonna mention that we don't have the people to do it, but everybody has the people and time to do it. So there, it's being paid for, or bought, or purchased some way, just that it isn't municipally done. And how we collect fees and things like that, the fees are being collected, I mean, he's paying them.
Yeah, we have the same, we haven't raised rates or anything because people can't afford it. It's been, it's been a losing battle. I mean, and the system is decrepit, or the trees have taken over, the change of conditions.
And it's gonna be a losing battle for anybody. That's why, that's why a municipal system, the pain's gonna, everybody's suffering the pain at different times instead of suffering evenly. I thank God, I'm not a socialist, I don't mean that, sorry, but...
But if somebody wants to go ahead and merge all those systems, that's great. I don't think the city can do that because we don't have expertise.
Well, but the thing is, we do have the expertise. We're paying for, they're individually, five, six, a group of 12, group of 12, a group of 26, a group of four, a group of 105, 105 wells, they're all paying for expertise. Somehow, we need to have a municipal system and have them pay into that same system, and that way, we have, there's obvious savings of scale there. I mean, if, I would agree with you, if we're diverse and hundreds of miles apart.
There's expertise out there, I got that. But it's, it's not in the city, and it's within those organizations, and there's, there's still, there's no reason that we can...
So my, my argument is that your, if I understand your argument correctly, is that the expertise is diverse, we're diverse, we're a small decentralized system, that's how it is now. And my argument is maybe this fits a centralized system, and we bring it in that way.
And my argument is, I don't think the city can handle it because we just don't have the money, the expertise to do it.
Well, the city is, the point is, though, in a decentralized basis, the city is handling it. They are handling it, because we, I mean, he's a citizen, he's handling it.
The citizens are handling it, the city is not.
So, the city is the citizens. I mean, I don't report to her, and I don't report to him, I report to people who like it.
I see it differently, Rory. We're not gonna agree on it.
But I, my argument is that it seems like we need to try to figure out plans to municipalize it or consolidate them, because, you know, what we're doing is be throwing the money in a thousand little rabbit holes instead of one people, let me guess.
I think, right now, we've got $317,000 to come here, that's not enough money to do, you know, to make a municipal water system, not even close. But it is enough money, and it is helping individual systems, but I think there's enough money there to help in portions each individual system to make their existing systems function a little more reliable than their functioning.
So my, my feeling is that we probably ought to pay and help the systems that are likely to succeed, and help them with line extension charges and loans, and help them simulate these people. That's my argument, so.
We may need to have a special session and talk about this more.
Terry, as an example, what, what would it take for you to get fully revamped and brought in?
That's the problem, I'm not a water guy. I've worked on a power system, and I know if you try to do a municipal water system, you're talking zillions, I mean, you're just, it's just like electricity, you have to have a line to everybody, you have to have your own. We've got a lot of pumps in the lake, I don't think people with wells have a right to this money, that's, they dug the well, it's their, that's their gamble. This is a community water system, it's a nonprofit corporation that precedes this city. I was, we were forced on there, when Bob told me this, when I was 23 years old, he says, "Whatever you do, don't let Dune City take it over." What did they do 10 years ago? They forced us to take it over. I told you, I said, "This is a start or something here." So ever since then, we've been on a shoestring just trying to keep it together, but this isn't happening now because pumps are now $3,000. The tank I need is, that we need is going to be, who knows?
I think that's our biggest concern, just being for our own system and our tank.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I don't know about the other systems, I think they're way better shaped than ours, though, I'm pretty sure of that.
So, a couple months ago, this came up when we talked about the funds, I actually went online and looked at all the cities in Oregon that had small, that provided water systems. And there were a lot of small cities that followed and that's about our size. Now, it's not, I don't have any notes and things, but it looks like the cost per user was less on the larger systems than the smaller systems. And that's, that's what I was looking at, and there's a bunch of them out there, and that was, I was using those as a model.
I think that what throws us off of Dune City, the population of Dune City goes into this column here with the other cities of, like, in the valley, but I doubt very seriously that they have the mile, the square miles of city. We're large area.
I agree, I agree with you, I agree with you that probably half the residents aren't, don't live here, or half the houses are on the surface and things. But the people that don't live here have water, and they have water issues, and they would contribute to the city, municipality. It's, I, I hear you, Mike, and, well, we're here about talking about some money, and I don't, I'm not in favor of probably putting it in little pots, that's my point.
My, my point is that we have $317,000, it's not enough to do a city, a city-wide water thing, but it is enough to help each system somewhat. Is it gonna cure each system? No, but it's going to help. And it's kind of one of them, use it or lose it kind of deals. We need to use it a certain amount of time, so.
The one thing I did want to point out, and I'm hearing all these different, and you're all right, that's the thing, you're all, all are correct. But I would point out that if you look at the plan to build a municipal water system that was adopted in 1960, or figured out in 1964, I believe it was, and then again in 1972, and then again in, in 1997, and then, you know, we haven't done it recently, but they all started with a small water system, every single one of them. Wesley was phase one, and that's the way it was designed to be installed in the city. I'm not saying municipal water system, let's do the whole thing at once, there's no way we could. Little tiny town off of the Coquille River ended up getting $1.6 million to put one in for their 600 homes, and they're all in one spot, right next to the river. So I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, let's help them out because that's how our system is ultimately going to be designed, is on these little areas, because that's the topography we have, that's the way it's built around here. I'm just asking, you guys tell me how much I can spend to help these people out, because that's all I was looking to do.
My suggestion was to make Dune City Hall write what it needs, and then take the rest and have it available for the systems on a as-needed basis through a, what's the word I'm looking for?
Gail Nichols, near the Montclair Lake Road, and the Alderwood pipes actually run along our border of our property down at the lake, and they're having the same problems that you are. One of the things I think would help all of these little water districts would be some advice, some workshops to help each of these water districts construct a viable plan to collect the money to be able to service their systems.
I think, right now, my, my biggest fear is the health issue with the COVID and, and the declining water quality in Waukegan, just as a general, you know, it's, it's not gonna get any better. It's, I only see this between the trees, the roads, I only see it getting worse. And there's gonna be a point where it's not gonna be four days off with water, it's going to be, we're out of water, there's no...
I agree.
And it's just, there's not a whole lot of ways to do it. If I wanna find a leak now, the only way I'm gonna be able to do it is buy some equipment or have somebody do it, fill the lines with gas, and we've done a section of that, and then sniff, you sniff it, you know, because it's, the ground is so saturated, there's not any water showing on the surface. It's probably a tree root, probably a, where they wrecked the road, going by with the big trucks and the excavator on there. It's, who knows where it is? But there's gonna be a point where it's gonna be an emergency. It's four days, it almost was an emergency, I mean, we've been out of power for six days at a time.
Exactly.
We've been out of water because of the power, but then when the water, the power came back on, then the pump was gone, and, you know, it just, it just snowballs. The trees are just taking over, and, like I said, the neighborhood's changed, Duke knows, I mean, we're trying to keep it all together.
Should we set up a fund that people can borrow from the fund and make payment plans back on the $317? Yes, no, you say $317, I think it's probably closer to $250,000 or $275,000, because you said, I don't, I thought, I know that, just according to my, my things here, the city upgrade that you were talking about, about, will be about $12,000 to $13,000, maybe $14,000.
And then, yeah, well, probably gonna be a little bit higher, huh? That's why I said, well, that's $20,000. So it's like $20,000, and then I can't remember what else, there was something else we were going to do specifically.
So, maybe we should, maybe that would be the best way, is to make a, make a fund available, what these small places will need to buy, buy a new tank or something, have, have to make a payment plan or something and borrow the money at a low rate.
I disagree, I don't think that money's ours. I think it's a rescue plan money, I don't think it's ours to loan out, I think it's ours to give out.
The thing is, though, in terms of a long-term support point, if you give it to them, that's great, but once they're, once, we would be able to have a long-term solution for people to be able to pay to fix their problems. And it would be for everybody, not just, because what you're saying is that we're gonna give, let's, let's say it's two, two of these water districts, let's give them all the money, is that fair for the rest, the rest of the residents of Dune City?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree with you.
They dug their own well, it's, you take a chance when you dig a well.
I see four or five water districts, and I know there's a lot of people with personal water rights here in Dune City, like, I have a, have to do a fish screen or something like that. I'm thinking of an ongoing fund, so that, we, it's kind of like a bank, so, two years from now, when, when your pump fails, they can get a loan to do it if it's too much, or and pay it back, or something like that? Would, would that be a better drop, and just give it to maybe 100 people, that the whole city, everybody can use it at different times? You know, it's kind of like a co-op sort of thing. Is that what I'm saying? Yeah, I just, I don't see that it authorizes us to use the American Rescue Fund to become a bank. Well, it talks about grants, and setting up grants and things, that's what I saw that, and we did.
Well, you don't pay back grants.
Well, I think, I think it's, so, Pell Grants, you pay back, or someone pay back, things of that sort, I'm trying to figure a way that, I wanna make sure that it's just not a few of the people that get the benefit, I'd like to see the whole city get the benefit of it.
I think we're having a meeting here, being televised, it's a public meeting, we're giving this money, there are people here from systems here now. If nobody's gonna be given all the money, it's not gonna go to one thing, it's gonna be as needed, on request, and then we will look at it, and we will be the ones that decide if it's a viable reason to give that system money. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Are you putting that in the form of a motion?
Well, to be honest, I think we need to have another session and talk about this some more. I guess unless you wanna make an action, what do you think's the best thing, Jamie?
Well, I know there, there is a particular water district that is in dire straits right now. And they have requested, I mean, they're having to spend money out of pocket at large chunks, very large chunks.
Did I hear you say that we need around $20,000 to do the infrastructure for Dune City Hall? Is that what, is that what?
They asked what we're estimating, the cybersecurity stuff, yeah.
And is there any other things that we want?
Well, there were a lot of things that we wanted to do, but I'm not so sure they fit anymore. I wanted to improve the roadways in Wesley area, and I am doing right now redoing the sign on the highway, which, those could fall under these, this money. The sign, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how much it's gonna be, but, but we, these water issues, this is water, people can't live without it. And so, I would point out that there are programs, what you're talking about through USDA, that specifically what the money is, is given to that, given to the departments, federal dollars, those are grants and low-interest loans, that money is available, and, but there, the government is not very good about letting people know what's available, what programs are out there. And so that's another thing that we could bring to the table, is, okay, we'll help you do this, but, you know, there's this too, and you might look at doing something about that, and when you borrow money and pay it back at 1%, and they help you set up the payment program, they'll help you do it.
I think that's a really good way to go, in, in a little bit longer term, but in the shorter term, we have these systems out there, need this money now, we have this money available now, we just need to decide how much of the money we wanna keep back for City Hall's fix-up.
For what I'm hearing, Jamie, if we kept $27,000 and said $290,000 was good to go to water companies, would that be plenty to cover everything now?
Oh, I think that would be more than enough.
I like that.
Because I'm, I...
A motion?
Sure, I motion.
All right, would you repeat it for, so that Laura can get it down?
I move that we set aside $290,000 for water issues in the city, or water systems to apply for the money.
Who's gonna decide how much we're going to give, or how much?
We're gonna give a second to the motion, then we can discuss.
I second.
Then we can discuss.
I second.
The whole point of that was, as Duke said, you take the $290,000 and you count here, there were six or seven water companies, so you divide that money by six or seven water companies, and that's the max they can get. But they have to apply for it and tell us how much they need and what they're gonna do.
If there's any left, if one, if one of the systems doesn't need it to get their situation fixed up, then it can move on to another system.
Then they can come to us and ask for more.
I think it should be divided up pretty equally.
But that, to start with, there's a cap.
Yeah.
I, I might note that we had some input from the Citizens, that mentioned about expertise and providing expertise or get professional help to figure out how to do our water systems. That's, that, it was actually a request, if you think about it, about the city needing to provide expertise for these things. And I wonder if we should be setting some of that, set money aside to do that sort of stuff.
Like for professional plumber, that type of, type of thing?
Well, I guess, or may, or maybe how to set, maybe the best, best practices, I'm not sure, I mean, because this, these are discussions, you know, and break...
You know, I think you could just almost incorporate that into each request from, because, like in Terry's case, he knows, but he knows our system better than him, he would know when he needed expertise, and that could be in his request for, for aid, but for funds.
We also have engineers on, not on staff, but on, under contract, that do this stuff for a living.
Is this a time issue in terms of the money, not if we don't issue it, or?
It's a time concern for a particular water district, because those people are paying out of their own pocket.
But they're not gonna take the money back if we don't?
I think we have until 2025.
Yeah, we have until 2025 to spend it, I do have to give a report on what we, and that's coming up relatively.
I'm just trying to help those, that one water company. I'm just trying to help those, that one water company, and, so they have something now.
Yeah.
We definitely want the money, and I think, I, I, with the motion we made, I think we need to keep twenty-seven thousand for infrastructure here in our city hall.
Well, her, her, her motion was for like twenty-nine thousand, two-hundred and ninety.
It was two-hundred and ninety.
It had nothing to do with the other part.
It did.
Two ninety.
It was two ninety, and it instead of left Jamie twenty-seven thousand.
So it didn't, so her, her motion was just for, as I understood, was just for the water portion of it, and, my purpose of the discussion is, what does that mean, what are we gonna spend it for, or whatever, or can we decide how we're, do that now, or we're just giving Jamie the right to say, all right, uh, we're gonna give, uh, twenty, uh, ten years or system?
No, they have to apply for it, right, that's what we said, they have to apply for it.
That's, are we giving her the authority to do it?
No.
Or we're gonna review?
Duke said it needs to come back.
What was your motion, that's what I was asking, I'm trying to understand it. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any vote?
I'm gonna stay, if I still know.
Okay. It passes. Thank you all, it was a good discussion. And those usually heard. Jamie, what water district is in these dire straits, which one?
Well, it's as I described in the staff report, I don't want to embarrass anyone here.
Okay. I think it's fair to say they're all in pretty dire straits.
Yeah, well, they're, they basically are, and that's the concern.
All right, moving right along, ordinance number two-six-zero, adding provision for chapter ninety-one, entitled nuisance, declaring certain outdoor lighting to be a nuisance. A proposed ordinance requires two readings before it is enacted at the city charter section thirty-four, parentheses three, provides that both readings may be read by title only, A, if no council member present at the meeting requested be read in full, or B, if a copy of the ordinance is provided for each under, and all requirements for posting an advertisement have been met. City reporter, have any, have all requirements for posting advertisements been met?
Yes.
Does any councillor desire the ordinance to be read in full? I would obtain, obtain, I would entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
I, uh, so moved ahead.
Second.
All those in favor? I, okay, my title only ordinance, amending chapter ninety-one of Dune City Code of Ordinances of Title Nuisances, by adding certain definitions under section ninety-one point zero-one, upset chapter ninety-one, adding a new section ninety-one point zero-five, parentheses C, relating to outdoor lighting and other matters properly relating thereto. I am now opening the public hearing.
Seven, seven twelve, seven thirteen.
Seven thirteen, yeah.
There is, uh, I know you've signed, I'm just checking.
Uh, city reporter, have you received any written testimony of the motion to be read into the record?
I have not.
Um, okay. Each witness is allowed three minutes to speak, after which the councillor may ask questions of the witness witnesses, or to address the councillors as a whole and not individually. Anyone sign up?
No, no, there aren't.
Okay, well now close the public hearing at seven fourteen P M, councillor, do you have further questions of staff?
They actually discussed a little bit the last meeting, we took it because councillor Wells wasn't here, and we took it because we felt that, I felt I asked to be taken because I felt that his views were important.
Thank you.
Do you wanna share your view?
I think about it.
Yes, yeah.
No, I think it's, I think this is fine, I think this is the right way to go, other than, although the planning commission put in lots of hard work to come with the new ordinance, it was just, in my opinion, way overbearing, and it, it was, it was Southern California craziness. Uh, we, I don't think we needed that here, I think that we need something like this, however, if there's a light that is a nuisance, that is bothersome, I think we need to look at it, uh, one-on-one basis and deal with it as they, as they come along, and treat it as a nuisance, and not, no need for an actual city ordinance. And so that's how we got to this, and I, I agree with this right here.
I am totally against this ordinance, um, if you look at some of the definitions, this is just way overreach. As an example, unreasonable noise between seven A M and seven P M, it is audible to a person and nor not hearing at a distance of one hundred yards. I'm surrounded by people running, uh, backpack blowers and weed eaters constantly, doesn't bother me because I know things go on. It's way over a hundred yards. This is, that's nuts, in, in my opinion. As to the lighting, if you look at some of those definitions, um, it, they, what they wanna do here is direct all the lights downward, or have none at all, I can tell you right now, that if all the lights are directed downward, in my view, we're limiting the, the, uh, safety of our citizens, number one, and the, we're gonna have increased that. We're gonna have a lot of that. It, a building that's well lit is a building that's not going to be burglarized as easily as one that is in the dark. And if you read some of this stuff, and it talks about the illumination, um, a foot candle, okay? Gee, wait, the unit of measure expressing the quantity of light received on a surface, one foot candle is the illuminance produced by a candle, one candle, on a surface of one foot square from a distance of one foot. And this ordinance, I think, limits the light to two or two and a half candles, uh, they, there's a name for it, luminaire, luminaire fixture. That's impossible, if you read this, any light that is visible to anyone is illegal, according to this ordinance. Um, the fully shielded, shielded fixture, again, direct the light downward below the horizontal plant, I think that should be plane, onto the site and does not shine direct illumination skyward or onto adjacent or nearby property. Any adjacent or nearby property is gonna see your porch light, I don't care what side of the building it is. We're talking about, and this is talked about in, in the dark, um, exterior glazed windows or sliding glass doors, if they are illuminated, oh my goodness, elevated habitable, habitable porch, um, it, it gets into decorative lights with individual light sources emitting three hundred lumens or less. Um, if it's more than that, you're, you're out of, uh, compliance, uh, that means I'm gonna have to take down the Christmas tree. I don't know how much three hundred lumens is with all my Christmas lights on my tree, this, this thing, I agree with, well, what Duke said earlier, this is Southern California all over.
Yeah, it is.
And I don't wanna even touch this, this, and mind you, this thing should be, um, dumped, it's nuts.
Tom, that is why, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, this is craziness, that's why I wanted to take it from being an ordinance, and just to be a nu, a, just a nuisance. If somebody has a problem, we can send Jamie over, whatever, to see what that light source is, and if it in fact is a nuisance, it, I, that, this ordinance is terrible. No place to do this.
But, but, you know, then we get into, okay, what is the definition of a nuisance, and if that is, my porch light's visible at mile away, I'll make sure that we're not getting into that.
Yeah.
That's all, I, I just think it's really overreach, yeah, it's nuts.
So at least, this, this ordinance, is it gonna be enforceable by complaint, is this complaint, you're...
Right, I tell you, yeah, it's re- actionable by complaint.
Not too much enforceable, but we'll, we'll look at it.
It's not enforceable at all, because no, nobody carries around the, or, you weren't gonna buy the device to see how many foot candles is out there?
Yeah.
That, that's gonna be real hard, and I'll tell you, two-foot candles is not, you will fall and trip, with only two-foot candles out there.
Absolutely.
I did OSHA, taught OSHA classes for several years, and we had nothing less than five. Uh, because you'll trip.
And bad guys would love to have a building illuminated with two-foot candles.
Yeah. I guess, I guess not good, my, my place is where it's gonna stay that way, so.
Yeah. So if we pass this, and your neighbor cross streets, thinks your street light's too loud, too high, it'll be a nuisance, and we'll have you before here, and we'll talk about it, so.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm not sensing a motion coming to pass.
Yeah, not for me.
Me neither. Susan? No? So I guess it's dead. Ordinance number two-sixty-two, changing the zoning of a parcel of land across the street from Dune City Hall from residential to commercial for purposes of using it for emergency and other storage facilities. A proposed ordinance requires two readings before it is enacted at the city charter section thirty-four, parentheses three, provides that both readings may be read by title only, A, if no council member present at the meeting requested be read in full, or B, if a copy of the ordinance is provided for each under, all requirements for posting an advertisement have been met. Have all requirements for posting an advertisement been met?
Yes, they have.
Does any councillor desire the ordinance to be read in full? I would entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only, I am so moved that we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
All those in favor, signify. I will read ordinance two-sixty-two by title only, an ordinance changing the zoning of a parcel of land located across the street from the city hall on Screw Street in Dune City, from a, a one residential zone to a C C community commercial district zone. I will now open this present eye of the public hearing at
Seven...
Seven twenty-three P M. Have you received any written testimony to read into the record?
I have. This letter is, I'm going to read an excerpt, do you want me to read it again? Because I can, on the record, the excerpt from Jeanne Jackson's letter. I'll just read the par, the one paragraph. Dune City wants to turn the recently acquired residential property across the street into a commercial one, which would greatly affect the peace and privacy of those of us who have long lived to the west of city hall and on Pacific Avenue. Dune City purchased the building that was once used as Westlake's community center, and that's this building, and sports club for a mere two thousand, basically the cost of back taxes, thanks to the cooperation and generosity of those involved. The city is now seeking to resume the, the quiet residential area to the west of city hall to a commercial one, so as to use it for emergency and other storage facilities. This could create a problem for many of our family members and neighbors who settled in this beautiful area for its peace and privacy long before you. Using this property that abuts our backyards on Hemlock Street, and those of our neighbors on Pacific Avenue for additional city storage and parking is one thing, but the possible, but the possible coming and going of emergency vehicles, or groups of people, is quite another. Would any of you enjoy living next to a fire station or ambulance service? A lot of us have sleep issues as well, so please take your fellow residents and neighbors into consideration before you act. Noise factors could also affect our individual property values, should any of us in the close vicinity of city hall choose to sell, rent, or seek a loan. So that is now in the record.
All right. I will now open this, I have a public hearing at seven twenty-five, and you read the written testimony into the record.
Right.
Then each witness is allowed three minutes to speak, after which councillors may ask questions of the witnesses. Witnesses are to address the councillors as a whole and not individually. Call authorities forward, is that...
Right, and, uh, either before or after you can ask for a staff report, because I did not get a chance to write a staff report for this one.
Okay, uh, Jeanne Jackson?
I'm right here.
Yes.
So mostly what I, and Jamie was kind enough, I'm sorry, uh, councillor Mills was, I'm sorry, your, your title now is city administrator Mills, was kind enough to read that, uh, my statement, so, all I really have to add to it is, I, you know, I am sure my neighbors are concerned as well. One set of neighbors isn't here all the time, they're one of these families, like many people who live in Westlake, that are here part of the time and not at other times. And the, I know, at least as of this summer, um, that, the, one of the people living in the other homes was critically ill, she told me, with cancer and having a lot of health issues. Um, and I just wanted to say, really, because I do feel like those of us who came here so many years ago, you know, and we chose to settle and live in Westlake rather than Florence, because our country, our family loved the country and loved Westlake and loved this area. And I just, we have had, we have had commercial properties, actually, we used to have more than we do now, but there, this was never commercial on this street, with the exception of this very building here, which I guess is commercial now because it's the city uses it. But, and I don't have any objection, if you wanted storage or parking, uh, my concern is, and the concern of other neighbors, and some of them aren't here right now, they're, they're, uh, house state, um, they are very concerned that there could be a noise factor, like, are we talking, I know at one time you had a police car parked there, are you talking emergency vehicles, if it's just parking and storage, I've got no problem, you know, and we mean to be good neighbors, but we are concerned about noise and issues like that, because we all, all of us who live here, moved here because we love the peace and privacy. And, you know, we chose not to live in a big city, so, and it would be hard to live next to an emergency station, they're very noisy.
Is there anybody else that, is there anybody else that signed up to speak?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay.
She signed it twice, so she can...
So what were your thoughts on using it, I guess that's what I would really like to know from the council, like, what, what were your plans, or do you have...
I wish you had brought it up earlier today, I, you were here.
Yeah.
Our kitchen is chock full of filing cabinets.
Yeah.
And the cities, all cities in the state are required to keep certain records forever.
Sure.
We're running out of room, that's what it's for, and, we have been told by, if there were the Cascadia event, all of the people in all of the campgrounds, Silkus Overlook, all of them, all the federal campgrounds, are told to come to Dune City Hall to stay and to escape the, the... So, it's anticipated, uh, in one time, I could have ten thousand people in addition to the people in Westlake, so that they don't go under water. We have emergency supplies, I am told that we can estimate approximately twenty-one deaths, so I need twenty-one body bags, they're currently stored in the men's room. I need blankets, I need towels, the towels just came in, there's six hundred towels right there, they look like a veil of hay in the back of the room. I need a place to put this, and that's all, that's all it was about.
And at previous meetings, you have spoken of that, I'm fine with that, I was a little confused with this new, you know, printout about what this meeting would be about, when emergencies were mentioned, I'm glad you clarified what you're referring to when you say emergencies.
Emergency supplies.
Yeah.
That's all, just the supplies in the event of emergency.
And certainly, we live here too, we all need a place, a shelter to go if something were to happen, and, as you all know, that probably wouldn't help us a lot if we got a tsunami or something, but thank you for offering this space.
Well, that's what they say, we're gonna be okay.
Yeah, yeah, that, that was my main concern in those... Yeah, that, that was my main concern in those of neighbors, is just the noise factor and, you know, how commercial are we talking? Also, once it's deemed commercial, what concerns me is can it then be used for other commercial purposes, or you could sell it to someone who might put in a business or something else? Do we know down the road?
Well, it depends. I mean, it would become a city property, the only reason, I'll tell you why, the only reason it, it would have to be zoned commercial, is to make sure whatever we put up over there meets the higher standard of commercial property, so that it would be a safe.
And is it a tax write-off too, to have it be regarded commercial for city hall to have that?
City doesn't pay taxes anyway. There is no tax.
Okay.
We don't pay taxes anyhow, so, other than employment taxes. So, no, it was just for emergency storage, so that we could, everybody has something under their desk. We're fitting our legs on. The guys have them all under the dais up there, all the storage.
Incredibly cramped here, and like you were talking about, and this has come up in previous meetings, and what Mr. Stan, letter Mr. Stanley wrote, and I know him, he's very nice. He used to be one of you. He actually was on your budget committee for a couple of years. And he is very, you know, he would be lovely to have his water talks, because he is very into water and has written several wonderful articles about it.
And there are many, many people in Dune City who have done that for a living.
Yeah.
Who have volunteered on the water quality committee, who, one of that is on the planning commission right now. So there's a wealth of information within the city from all of our wonderful citizenry that can help us with, with.
And as he wrote to you, he, he just was very, uh, he would love to come to the meetings. He said that to me, and he's worried, you know, he is, well, I, you know, a lot of people are in their seventies and older, and he's concerned about COVID.
Thank you.
And, but he and his wife would otherwise attend, and he, you know, he's very concerned about water and issues.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Jamie, can we not put storage up over there with it being zoned as it is? It can, but it's not a safe. I'm not sure how FEMA's gonna feel about the, or, yeah, well FEMA, uh, about putting the storage into something that isn't. The standards for construction are for, are higher for commercial properties. Right. And because this is a commercial property, and that would answer that question, because this is a commercial property, and for the same reason that she's talking about, we have the ability to join that property with ours, to put a covenant on that property that says, if this property ever sells, that property goes with it. But, no, I guess it doesn't. I mean, I mean, it just depends on what the inspector's gonna say when he comes to do the inspection after we install it properly and have it anchored down. Because you can build to a higher standard. Yeah, I can anyway. Residential property, right? I just don't know how the building inspector is gonna look at it.
That's a great question. I had wondered the same thing. Thank you.
I wonder if we would still have our tax exempt if it was left a residential and not moved to commercial. Being part of this, if this is commercial, I don't think you can join them. I don't, you know, I.
Yeah, I, I don't know. So right now, we did not get charged taxes for it. We've had it long enough for it to show up on the tax bill, so.
Okay, I will now close this public hearing at seven thirty-three. Councillor Lee, any further questions to the staff?
What was that?
Yeah.
I was a little confused, you know, because I thought, I, I understand some of the folks in city being confused by the emergency, you know, thinking there's gonna be fire trucks, ambulance is running and out. I was always, you know, aware that it was just gonna be for emergency goods, supplies, storage.
Supplies, storage.
That was my.
Thank you. It just wasn't stated, and we just wanted to make sure it was all, it was a question. So you said, we're welcome to come and ask questions, and I thought that should be asked before people, you know, move too quickly to pass something when there are people who have concerns and.
I, I move, I move that we accept the ordinance. Okay?
Second.
Now we can discuss about that. So I, I personally think that the city is a commercial operation, and we're using it for commercial purposes as a city, so that's why I don't think it should be residentially zoned. I don't think we should be.
Yeah.
All those in favor of the acceptance of this motion?
Aye.
Any vote?
I'm gonna oppose. I'm gonna oppose.
You're gonna vote?
Oppose.
Oppose.
I think it could still be residential and is constructed to a higher standard and use it. And that way, we wouldn't worry the citizens around it.
That should end the discussions.
I did.
I think it passed.
Yeah.
And thank you for being so questioning, because I can understand the reading there. I mean, I.
And I appreciate what councillor Wells just said. I just have those concerns too, and I know you all mean well now, and this is your intention now, that things can change. If it becomes commercial, will somebody buy it someday and put a motorcycle shop in or something? We don't know, and that's what concerns me about it. I'd like it to stay a residential neighborhood. I understand your halls here, and, and we have lived next to your hall for many years now. And it, actually, it's a very quiet place, as you know, because there are only two nuts while you have meetings with large mouths.
So, but there, there would be a public hearing if we sold the property. Is that correct? We'd have to.
There would be a real, something big going on if we sold the property.
Yeah, so, it sounded like it was, that was my point, and so.
We're just concerned about the future and what the statement meant. You know, my, my family is, and some of the neighbors were too. Thank you.
All right. Ordinance number 261, commending chapter 92 entitled Building Program to comply with S.B. 866 of the N.O.A.P. in accordance with the Dune City Building Program Operating Plan. First reading and second reading. Proposed ordinance requires two readings before it is enacted. The charter, section 34, preface three, provides that both readings may be read by title only. If no councillor member president is being requested to be read in full, or if a copy of the ordinance is provided for each member of all requirements proposed in an advertisement, then met. Have all requirements proposed in advertisements been met?
They have.
Uh, does any councillor desire the ordinance to be read in full? I would entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I, I will read ordinance 261 by title only. An ordinance commending chapter 92 of the Dune City Code ordinances of the parallel building program by adding and changing language to the existing code to comply with provisions of newly adopted Senate Bill 866 and New Oregon Administrative Regulations adopted by the Building Code Division of the Department of Consumer and Business Services and other matters properly relating thereto. I will now open this and, I'm in the public hearing at seven thirty-eight. Is there anyone? You have any written testimony?
No, I do not.
Okay. Did anyone sign that to tell?
No, there are no.
Okay. Is there a staff report?
There is not a staff report, because it's essentially the same staff report that you had for the resolution.
Okay, I will now close this public hearing at seven thirty. I would entertain a motion to amend the language of the ordinance 261 presented in any.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Good.
We've got a discussion. I mean, so, I'm not part of a public hearing. We're supposed to discuss it. I want to discuss it. I want to clarify something in terms of the fees that we have. Are these added fees or extra fees?
What fees?
Uh, I'm looking at this, Dune City proposed fee schedule. Is this part of that ordinance?
No.
Where is that at? Where was that voting on that? We already voted.
That was voted on in whatever year that was adopted, 2017.
So why is this included in here?
That is an exhibit, actually, to, um, the resolution. That's the, that is, that is a requirement. I have to send that to the state along with the resolution, the ordinance, and everything else. It's all packaged together.
So where were the fees, uh, where were these fees accepted, or did we vote on them, or?
Yes, they were presented by the city council. It's always done by city council. It was resolution number five, adopted, just a second, I'll figure. As soon as I find that first.
So is that part of any of the votes that we've done, that we have done already?
Yes, it was like, in 2020, was the last time we.
Okay, so I was gonna ask things like, if you notice, like adding a water heater for $26, is that a new construction or a fine, well, it's replaced? But since it's not part of our motion, I don't think there's anything else to discuss.
Well, a water heater.
I would just look at those fees.
Is under mechanical fees, and under mechanical fees, when there's a new house built, there's a big chunk. They charge like 190 bucks for everything.
That was, that was a question I had, but it's not involved to this, so I don't need to.
No, it isn't related to this. It just has to be sent in with this.
I'll entertain watching that a second reading of ordinance 261 by title only.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I would like a second reading of ordinance 261 by title only. An ordinance commending chapter 92 of the Dune City Code of Ordnance as the title Building Program by adding and changing the language to the existing code to comply with the provisions of newly adopted Senate Bill 866 and New Oregon Administrative Regulations adopted by the Building Code's Division of the Department of Consumer and Business Services and other matters properly relating thereto. I will now entertain a motion to accept the wording for ordinance 261 as presented, and to adopt and pass ordinance 261.
So moved. Second.
The roll call vote must be taken.
Councillor Wells?
Aye.
Councillor Mallon?
Aye.
Councillor Chanel?
Aye.
Councillor Kenneth?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance 261 is hereby adopted and become effective February 19th, 2022. There is no executive session. Reports, uh, mayor's home email. Community center report.
We had some minor flooding during the rainstorms, and we got that cleared up, and that drain was plugged, Fred's drain and the big drain, we run a snake through and cleaned them out. We haven't had a big rain since it's hit, it works, but hopefully it doesn't.
All right, thank you very much for joining us.
Water quality report?
We're trying. We're trying to get a committee together, and anyone who would like to volunteer for the water committee, then please contact Jamie or myself.
Okay. Vote reports. We hired somebody to ride around and look and tell us what we need to do and.
No, that's your job.
Do you, any of you have a report to go on your area?
I've been sending them to Jamie as they change, but I'm, they're kinda the same as it's been.
Okay.
I have advised Jamie that they once again stole the street sign on the night of the lockdown time, over Christmas break. It's only been up a few weeks.
Yeah.
Bam.
I know. I called Scott over at the Lane, because we, that's Lane County street sign, and so I called Scott over there, and he just couldn't believe it, so. We're trying to figure out, because what they did, they didn't just steal it, they caught up, because they had put it on tight, you know, with one of those locking things. They took a Skilzall or something and cut off the top of the.
Oh, no, pissed.
I think we need to put camera on that damn thing.
Yeah, trail cam.
Yeah.
Uh, rename the street. We're on a tail.
I, I think we ought to put a camera and figure out a large find. Did they have a cam?
Yeah, or at least put a sign on the sign that says it's video.
Yeah, they'll probably steal the camera.
Oh, that's crazy. Probably shit creek or something. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I suggested grinding off the bolts so that the line.
Well, yeah, that's not gonna stop them cutting it off.
Yeah, if they give saws and all that, there it's gone.
Electrify it.
Well, that was my idea.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I discussed that with Scott, said, you know, bury that 12-volt and wire that.
Emergency services report.
Talk like that.
I don't have an emergency services report, and my city recorder report is in the packet, um, and I don't think there's anything on there that we haven't already discussed or looked at.
Okay. For the good of the order. Anything?
Can I retire now?
Anybody else?
No.
I know. I'm good, thank you.
Well, here I go. I'm getting tired of, uh, Lane County. I walk every morning, about five miles, four, four miles every morning, and on my walk, I see, not every morning, but I run into quite often, busload coming over from Eugene being dumped down on Bay Street. This is not a Dune City problem, it's just my observation. And bringing folks over, putting them out here, and then they wander around our streets, and I've seen some terrible things that I'm not gonna repeat here, but I'm just, I'm just putting it out there. I'm, they're just, they're curing, taking their problem and just transferring it over here and dumping them on the streets over here.
Do they take them back?
No.
No, no, they dump.
No, they're brought here, and I seen, I seen three this morning that got off bus, and I walked to town, and they're doing their yelling thing. It's still dark out. I mean, it's, it was dark this morning, but they're doing their yelling, and, you know, it just, it's been going on for a long time. They're just.
These are homeless people?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I don't ask for their ID. I just, they're getting, but it's, it's been going on for so long. I don't think that's right. I'm not helping anybody.
Are they coming in city buses, or do you know?
It's a transit bus that goes between Florence and Eugene.
Oh.
Lane, Lane Transit Bus.
Yeah.
For free, you know, to the whole town.
It's not free.
It's not free, but they do.
Well, sometimes they.
They give passes.
They do, yeah.
And it has been going on for a long time.
Yeah.
And of course, the joke is that the city of Florence gives them passes, and they take the bus, because the bus also goes up and down the coast now.
Yeah.
And they go somewhere else.
But we get from the valley. They get, they're here, and, you know, I haven't been, I don't live in town, but I have a business in town, and it affects my business, it affects my, my property. I've had to clean some terrible things up between the dentist's office and my, my, my place, and it's getting worse. I, I've seen some, it's not good.
That might be an issue to discuss with the board, city council.
Well, it kinda goes back to when I was driving over to Eugene 126 in Bell Line, and I made a statement about that, called our county commissioner, you know, those kinds of things, and, uh, it got cleaned up. I'm not saying it's because of mine, but it was because of people like me, and I understand from a concerned citizen that that place is regenerating again at the same spot after day near three, four days of a lot of money, hazmat type money cleaning that mess up over there, so.
Yeah.
You know, I don't. I think, I think our area, and when I mean our area, I think Florence and Dune City deserve better than that, just to have folks locally brought over here with, you know, and dropped off.
A motion? I, I, I'm happy to see that there's lots of people.
Yeah.
I really appreciate it, because I feel kinda lonely the days that we only have one person or no people here in some of the months.
Very nice.
And it's not, actually, if I could get this guided.
Thank you. It's not been a lack of interest.
Yes, let me.
Interest is just, you know, culled in other issues that people consider about.
I wanna clean my hands before I do this. I'm gonna bribe the cameraman, and I wanna make it a bribe, and not a, I don't wanna make him think I'm gonna kill him, so I'm cleaning my hands. Here's $20, $20. If you promise to make sure that I get no higher than here on, on the TV.
Make sure that I get no higher than here on, on the TV. Could you do that for me? No higher.
Well, you're standing.
No lower than that. I don't wanna say that, no lower. No lower than, see, I want to get myself a drink. This is a good order, no lower than that, could you do that?
You have to stay in your seat.
Right here, if I stay right here, no lower than that.
How much would it cost to get no higher than that?
Okay, I can, no lower than that, you sure it's no lower than that, you can't see below my chest. $20. I don't know, I still see too much of me there. It isn't like, okay, so you got me set there. Now I want you to step back. First of all, I want you to know I got my keys out, got my wallet out.
I don't know.
Here's my pants, my pants. Congressman Wells, Councilmember Wells, do I have, do I have, yes or no, do I have boxers? Yes or no? Do I have boxers?
Yes.
Councilman Snow, yes or no? Do I have briefs?
Yes.
Councilman Wells, am I wearing a mask?
No.
Councilman Snow, am I wearing a mask?
Yes.
Am I appropriate a distance from you? Yes or no?
No.
Not as large as open St. Hill.
That's right.
Seventy-two inches.
Council President Sheldon, am I wearing underwear? You know, I, uh.
I don't know, and I don't care.
And I really don't care. Well, I am really cold, so I motion that we adjourn. So I wish the press is here. Thank you.
What do you got, are you listening?
Thank you. It really didn't keep the funny bite.
Did you adjourn meeting?
Yes, I did, we voted.
Meeting is adjourned.
Yes, yes.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.